I'm not next to plug any more. Sorry about that.
Good evening.
Good evening, and welcome to the August 6th meeting of the Ithaca Common Council. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. All members are in attendance. Since we have a full house tonight in the gallery, I'm going to go ahead and read the emergency evacuation notice. In case of an emergency, we are to take one of two exits. The door that most of you came through were this emergency exit door here. We are to exit, wait by the trees on the same side of the street that we are on, on South Qugan Green. We do not cross Green unless it is absolutely necessary. Those with restricted mobility, in the event of emergencies, it is best to move to one of the stairwells, and first responders will arrive to aid you. In the event of other emergencies, you'll be notified at this time. Thank you, Deputy Clerk. We want everyone to be aware of their surroundings and offer help when it is not to your own detriment, as you were your own best advocate. With that, I will turn to agenda review. Any additions or additions to the agenda? Seeing none. Oh, all the persons, same prayers.
I would just like to note that it is, in fact, the mayor's birthday today.
Still alive. Thank you, all the person. Any reports from municipal officials? I didn't see any of them here today, so I'm guessing no. Oh, legislator pillar. Take your time, but you're what? You're, you're on, yeah, you're on the docket. It is, we are there. You can catch your breath, and I can say how nice it was to see you this morning at that presentation while you settle in.
It was lovely. Yeah, sorry I'm late-ish. Good to see all 11 of you. That's incredible. It's been a while because of respective July recesses, so I have kind of a long list. I'll try to be quick. First, we are at the county. We are in the middle of our budget process. You probably saw a news release about an $11 million hole in the budget, which is a conservative early estimate. This is, our administrator has not presented his final budget. That's coming, I think, at the end of this month or very beginning of September. And so they've already shut that deficit from what it is. The main, very roughly the drivers of that, that $11 million change is predicted $6 million less of revenue, and then $5 million more of expenses to keep a maintenance of effort, but just things are more expensive. But that's definitely going to be better when the administrator's recommended budget comes along, and we'll go from there. So no meetings about that until September. For the Code Blue slash Navigation Hub for unhoused people, you have a resolution before you about this tonight. The county passed ours last night with simple enthusiastic unanimity. So I hope you pass yours, because we're very excited to be partnering on this well-placed, very needed project. The Center of Government is still coming along. You probably also saw, also saw the kerfuffle about the location of the Board of Elections. Last night, we voted to confirm that we will not actually be moving the Board of Elections outside of the city of Ithaca even temporarily. We are still, or we did still agree to purchase that building. This is a office building up at 31 Dutch Mill Road, past the airport, right by the Vidler Scholz apartments. I haven't seen the building, but I'm told it itself is very nice. There were, people had concerns about the accessibility for the public getting out there, namely, just for anyone without a car, it would be quite challenging. So we are still planning to likely move some departments out there temporarily. TBD which ones, there's a lot of conversations going on among the staff. As maybe a reminder for folks, the reason that departments need to move somewhere temporarily anyway is that the Center of Government planned site is gonna replace three existing buildings. The Key Bay Building where Code Blue was last year, which is currently empty, the Legal Building next to it, which is empty, and the 128 East Buffalo Street, also known as Annex Building C, which is not empty, that's where the Board of Elections and our Assessment Department and our IT Department are located. IT may have started moving. I don't remember. Don't go visit them. They're not for the public. But the other two, very important, they're located there, and that building needs to be deconstructed before the Center of Government can begin construction. So during the whole process, the departments that are currently there need to be somewhere else. Still on the topic of Center of Government, there's, since some other shuffling around, county administration and county human resources have also relocated to the Green Street Mental Health Building. Probably less impactful for folks in general, but there you are. And this is very much for everyone. Last week, our, the county and our consultants on the design of the Center of Government held a public information session to show a few potential designs, get feedback, the shared results of a parking study relevant to the Center of Government. And I highly recommend, if people are interested, to go watch the recording of that. That's on the county website. At the short URL is tcgov.co/cog. And also, there is a survey up right now wanting public input on, like, what do you think about the design proposals? So please go fill that out also, tcgov.co/cog. It should be clear where to find the survey, but let me know if you can't. And I am not sure when that is closing, but it could be closing as early as the beginning of next week. So go look at the pictures. All right. We have, like, four new people in prominent positions at the county. We, you probably know, Dan Nolan was sworn in as county legislator in District 3 to serve out the rest of Susan Curry's slash Henry Brannison's term until the end of this year. We have appointed also three new department heads. Our new finance director is Daryl Tuttle, who has been the deputy director for the last three years. Now he's the director. We're very happy to, to still have them, him in that role. We also appointed, as our Commissioner of Whole Health, Jenny Sutcliffe, who comes with a lot of experiences in public health, most recently in the New York City Health Department. And she's from Truman'sburg originally, so that is cool. And then recently, or starting like two weeks ago, we appointed Brittany Earl as the Commissioner of Social Services. And also excited about that. She's, like, jumped in two feet into the deep end, very enthusiastically participating. And she has a lot of experience in a whole multitude of roles in various sectors that make her a great fit for us now. Almost done. The, a month or so ago, we officially allocated money to pay a consultant to do a study on what would be the impacts of raising the minimum wage in Tompkins County. You might remember that we more or less did that last August, but we had to reaffirm the money, and then an RFP actually went out. The bids are in, and so hopefully someone will be selected, and the study should begin soon. We've updated our county's diversity, equity, and inclusion policy, which is exciting and I think very important in these times. Lots of our staff at various levels put in good work on that. And something I'm excited about is that compared to the policy that it replaces, that's like 10 years old, it, well, one, it adds the word equity, but it's a lot more, it's less about the ideals and what we want to be have happening, and more about the, like, specific procedures and systems, and more clear on naming, like, what roles do what, which helps us to operationalize that work. And speaking of, I know the city of Ithaca is also a host for this, but I want to plug the Gare Government Alliance on Race and Equity local convening that is happening here in Tompkins County on October 20 to 22, with an optional virtual training day on October 8th. This is, the Government Alliance, Alliance on Race and Equity is a organization that does what it sounds like it does. It's a project of Race Forward, a bigger national organization, and they chose Little Tompkins County to host this big regional gathering. They came for a site visit. We're very impressed. We've talked about this before, but the point is, this conference, the theme is From Protest to Policy: People's Power, Voice, and Vision. About the lived experience of this moment, the evolution from public outcry to institutional accountability. So it's open, I mean, certainly all to you in front of me, but also behind me and anyone at the public. If you consider yourself a practitioner of racial equity in the public spheres, or an aspiring one, this is for you. There are still spots. And it's really targeted, not at just, like, learning and networking, which are all great, but it also producing, really boosting plans and connections and the ideas for the outcome to be racial equity practitioners in our region, ready to, like, do actual practical work and make actual practical changes, like, starting immediately from the conference. That's all.
Thank you very much. Questions for the legislator? Well, thank you very much for that detailed update, and
Thank you.
Take good care. All right, before we turn to approval of the minutes, I have the privilege of proclaiming our quarterly recognition awards. I have two this month. So the first is recognizing our water plant operations staff, and they were nominated by Assistant TPW Superintendent Scott Gibson. On June 10th, an accidental chemical incident occurred at the water treatment plant when the chemical delivery company connected to the wrong fill port and blended two dissimilar chemicals, causing chlorine gas to form. Nate Carmen, Alejandro Gonzalez, and their staff evacuated the building according to plan and contacted IFD. Nate, Alejandro, and staff continued to tirelessly monitor operations throughout the ordeal, phoned adjacent water utilities for backup, made plans with environmental cleanup companies, all while assisting the emergency response folks until early evening to ensure that water service could continue uninhibited. On June 11th, while plant operations were attempting to neutralize the chemical, additional chlorine gas was released, prompting the plant to evacuate once again. IFD arrived on-site and declared the plant unfit for reentry late in the day. Staff had to operate the filter process remotely from the parking area and continue their work with the environmental cleanup company, and babysat the plant through the night into the hours, into the early hours of June 12th. On June 13th, remaining product and chemical tanks were still off-gassing, prompting another evacuation. Plant staff once again tirelessly operated the plant and remained on-site through additional overnight hours and into the morning of June 11th. In between, staff worked with local state, local and state health departments, as well as other agencies. They followed policy and procedure from an environmental, worker, and drinking, and water health and safety standpoint. For their ceaseless dedication on maintaining the safety of plant staff, protecting the public health of the community, and the safety of our drinking and water supply, they are so recognized with this recognition form this, this quarter. Yep. We'll deliver that to them. Our second one this evening is nominated by Assistant City Attorney Catherine Muskin, and this is to recognize our acting comptroller, Wendy Cole. Wendy is a consummate professional. In Catherine's world, she has called in on a moment's notice to share expertise and guidance with every department in the city, and often quickly advises on the spot. What makes her such an asset in these scenarios beyond her actual knowledge is her kindness and approachability. Wendy keeps her cool and brings peace of mind to high-stakes scenarios. In her opinion, it is an incredibly valuable asset to someone humble enough to say, "I'm not sure, let me look," rather than bluster through an answer. Wendy does this and then follows through with clear guidance. This makes her such a wonderful team player. I feel so grateful to have Wendy in leadership, because she treats everyone as an equal. She does not ask to do anything she would not herself do. And Wendy has demanded accountability from the city, making sure the texts aren't just done, that they're done correctly. This has meant that although the audits have been a subject to public criticism, she has not bowed to pressure and taken shortcuts, but has made incredible efforts to make sure that they are both prioritized and accurate. We are so impressed with Wendy's composure, work ethic, kindness, and expertise that she has recognized this evening for another one of our quarterly recognition awards. Wendy, come on up and, yeah. Thank you, Wendy. That's always fun to do every quarter. All right. Well, with that, council, I'd like you to please, someone move in second, the June 4th and June 11th minutes from our council and committee of the whole meetings. Move by all the person, Letterman. Second by all the person, Shapiro. Any comments or questions on the minutes? All the person, same prayers.
In the June 11th minutes, I, I actually, I'm sorry to say, I think there may be a typo. In the voting record on the, on the, in the first voting record on the final page, it indicates that Alder Person Letterman voted for an amendment that I proposed. I checked the video. He didn't. It did pass seven to three. I do not recall who the votes were in that. I would look to the collective memory of this group. It was some time ago.
All in favor of accepting the all-the-persons' proposed motion for the minutes to reflect the videotape? Assuming that none of you remember, because I sure as heck don't. All the person, Letterman? Okay, cool. That is unanimous. Thank you, all the person, for catching that. Any further comments or questions on the minutes? And that was for the June, the June 11th meeting.
It's on page 10 of the June 11th meeting voting on amendment to Alder Person Letterman.
That I impose upon the all-the-persons', just make sure that that is provided via email to the deputy clerk, so that
Absolutely.
Thank you. With that typographical amendment, any reason to not move these forward? All those in favor as amended? That carries unanimously. With that, we will turn to statements from the public. I have my comment cards here. We have one Zoom participant. As folks know, you have three minutes, once you begin. My first speaker is Zachary Nguyen. Good evening. You have three minutes, once you begin.
Thank you. Good evening. Friday, August 1st, saw yet another unpermitted street takeover and roadblock, this time on Seneca Street. This kind of disruption is precisely what I urge the common council, mayor, and city manager to discourage by calling on residents to keep their protests within the bounds of the law. Once again, the Ithaca police were placed in the role of facilitating, rather than preventing, an illegal act, diverting traffic to accommodate the roadblock instead of enforcing the law. This particular protest was staged under the banner of solidarity with Gaza. The same day, Hamas released a video of Yitay David, an Israeli hostage held since October 7th, emaciated, confined to a tunnel, and forced to dig what was claimed to be his own grave in an act of psychological torture. Over the past decade, the justifications for these roadblocks have shifted repeatedly, from Michael Brown in 2014, to opposition to the Way Sueton Pipeline, to George Floyd, to Cornell's MOU, and now to Gaza. Inevitably, other justifications will be found. Throughout this time, I have seen little, if any, meaningful condemnation or discouragement from the common council, or from past and current mayors. Each time a roadblock is permitted to occur without consequences, it sets a precedent and encourages further disruptions. This kind of brazen behavior not only undermines the cause it claims to represent, but also alienates those who might otherwise be sympathetic. When one wrong is used to justify another, the message is lost. These actions also contribute to a growing perception that Ithaca, downtown Ithaca, is a place to avoid. They create safety risks, not only for the participants, but also for the innocent people who may delay it in their medical emergencies, whether in ambulances or private vehicles. It is important to note that only a small hand, small group of individuals is responsible for these recurring roadblocks. I urge the members of the council, mayor, and city manager to speak out. Ask those, those responsible to stop. Perhaps no one has directly asked them before. Make it clear that these roadblocks are not an acceptable form of protest. I recognize that some members of this council have participated in roadblocks in the past and may believe they are justified. If you feel that way, I also encourage you to speak out. The public deserves to know if you support the type of conduct that occurred last Friday. And to the remainder of the council, mayor, and city manager, please understand that silence speaks for itself and signals tacit approval of what occurred. But for those of you who believe in lawful and constructive protest and not the tyranny of the mob, please say so clearly and publicly. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Teresa Olt. Welcome, Teresa. You have three minutes, once you begin.
In my opinion, a shortage of affordable housing in this city is its worst problem. So I'm very disappointed to see nothing about that on today's council agenda. Apparently, in mid-June, you sent Southside Form-Based Zoning back to the Planning Department with instructions for a rewrite. That's okay. And it seems to be stuck there. Or did planning do it, and the mayor has kept it off the agenda? Zoning is the main way in which the city, on its own, can actually affect the supply of housing in the city. No, it cannot actually create housing by zoning, but it can stop making things worse in many ways. Let me emphasize again why the shortage of housing that would be affordable to the people who work in the city and lots of low-paid service jobs is such a serious problem. Not only is living far away a hardship for those service and clerical workers, and dangerous in winter, the automobiles in which they commute spew exhaust into the air on every working day. Please prioritize moving ahead on housing issues.
Thank you. Next is Andre Gardner. Welcome, Andre. You have three minutes, once you begin.
Thank you. For those who don't know me, I'm Andre Gardner. I'm a vice chair of the BZA, and I'm also a landlord in town. For the record, I'm also not a developer. I came today to give some perspective on historic districts, specifically developing in historic districts. Well, it is true that you can do new construction in a historic district. The lived experience of developers indicates that doing so brings uncertainty and added costs. In prep for this meeting, I spoke to a couple local developers who we can get some specific examples. So I spoke to Frost, who is a developer per Library Place, which is in the Duitt Historic District. That went through months of review, even though it was existing, it was replacing a non-conforming building. It still had to be historically contributing. They went through numerous iterations with the ILPC and added, and they added ending, adding brick cladding to the project, which is pretty rare. According to Frost, that added between $700,000 and $1 million in incremental hard costs to the project. While it's a big project, it just sold for a multimillion-dollar loss. So thinking about $1 million in added hard costs, that matters. The second one, on a completely different end of the spectrum, is Ferris Place, which is a small six-unit infill project in the East Hill Historic District. That went through almost a year of reviews and numerous design changes with the ILPC. They ended up requiring the building be built with wood siding, wood windows, and wood doors. That's pretty rare nowadays for new construction. Charlie estimated those costs as an extra $100,000 in hard costs. So on a six-plex, that's $16,000 per unit. The consistent takeaway from developers is that developing in a historic district requires lengthy ILPC approval and costs incremental tens of thousands of dollars per residential unit. Makes them less likely to invest and develop in historic districts. It's also important to note that you cannot get a historic tax credit for doing new construction in a historic district. So that avenue to recoup costs is not there. So as a member of the BZA, we've done a lot over the last few years. Well, council has done a lot over the last few years with throwing in perm in the process. We've had our first meeting last night for the first time since April, and it was a 20-minute meeting, and that's a big win for anyone who's trying to do any development or small sale reseab to their house. You know, I think that as a council, it makes sense to do a moratorium on, you know, historic district expansion, so we can think about how the ILPC can adopt a similar process. You know, I encourage everyone on this board to watch ILPC meetings. They're very difficult. I've seen applicants cry. I've never had an applicant cry at any one of my meetings. It's worth a review. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Dave Barkin. Welcome. You have three minutes, once you begin.
Okay. Thank you. My name's David Barkin. I'm here in a personal capacity, though I do chair the Board of Zoning Appeals. I do want to say that over the past few years, working with staff and ultimately this body, we have seen very real incremental gains in our zoning, and things are finally moving as I see it in the right direction. And that's what brings me to what I believe you guys are going to be discussing here in the, the meeting here tonight, or in the weeks to come, which is possibly doing a moratorium on the expansion of historic districts. Not doing away with districts that are already in place, but I do support foregoing actively trying to expand districts, because I see it as running highly counter to the goals we have as a city, as our, you know, as we try to address our growing tax base and our housing needs. I think of housing issues more as a, an elongated intergenerational process, right? So the issues that we face as a community today are deeply rooted in decisions made 50 years ago, right? So if you look at districts that were created in the 70s, how did that impact development or growth or the condition of housing stock today? And if you're now looking toward, you know, a restructuring of our entire zoning code, which we've gotten a grant for, why are we at the same time trying to expand districts that greatly encumber properties? So as a Realtor, I have to advise my, my clients as a fiduciary of the onerous risks involved with owning a property. It is totally up to somebody to buy in a historic district. It's another totally different thing to have a district expand to come to you. Oftentimes, these decisions or this outpouring of support is also rooted in more NIMBY attitudes or more problematic issues that I think we need to unpack, right? Who gets to live where? What kind of density relates to what one individual perceives as acceptable for their moment in that house? Maybe their, you know? So again, it's, we have a very myopic focus, and then certainly, when it gets into the weeds of materiality and approvals, that can get really problematic. And so I don't understand why we would go all this way for zoning reform, just to then usurp those new reforms by having a body that's not tied to land use reform? Like, the ILPC itself can bypass zoning. So I don't understand why we're working so hard to then go towards something that's even more restrictive and backward-looking. And then lastly, as somebody that renovates existing housing stock, I can say that my buildings will now last another 150-plus years, and I specifically do not buy in districts because it's untenable. So with that
Thank you. That is your time. Next, I have Reverend Weaver. Welcome. You have three minutes, once you begin.
There we go. Hi. My name is Kirian Weaver, and I'm the senior pastor of the First Presbyterian Church, next to Duitt Park. When you're living or working in downtown Ithaca, you never know what's going to happen, and July 28th was one of those days. I was leaving from work in the afternoon and noticed a fellow in Duitt Park with a couple of shopping carts and some large black bags of garbage piled on the grass behind one of the war memorials. I wondered what was up, but nobody in the park seemed particularly bothered by it, and the whole thing didn't seem startling enough for me to say anything, until I returned to work about an hour later. The same fellow had turned this bagged garbage ma- The same fellow had turned this bagged garbage mountain into a free-flowing garbage lake of about 20 or 30 feet across, and he was stirring through the refuse with a stick, turning things over. There was all kinds of stuff in it: old clothes, half-eaten food, household items, shoes, computer parts, a lamp with no lampshade. It was a real mess. "Hey there," I called out. "What you doing?" The man looked down at the ground and mumbled a bit. We had a little conversation, and I took some of his mumbling to be a scent. I invited him to clean up the mess before I came out of my meeting. "Does that sound good?" I said, and he mumbled again. When I got back out, the garbage was totally untouched, but the man was gone. So not knowing what else to do, I called the Ithaca Police Department. Officer Vinti arrived a little bit later, and he was amazing. After a couple of words of description, he knew exactly who this was. He said, "This is somebody who does this often in different places around town, and he knows what to do about it. Sometimes if he stands over him, this person will clean up the mess. If you couldn't find him," Officer Vinti said, "he would call the Department of Public Works to send a crew out to clean up." Before he left, he picked up three hypodermic needles from the garbage pile to keep the public safe. I wanted you all to know, who are hearing this, that the service that our publics do, servants do, is incredible. By 9:00 AM the next morning, that gigantic, polluted, motley swamp of particulate trash had been completely picked up to the last bit of candy wrapper, so that I could not even tell where it had been. I don't know if an officer stood over a miscreant and made sure that he did the right thing, or if, as I suspect, some little-fanked members of Public Works had an unexpectedly unpleasant job waiting for them in the morning. But I want everyone hearing this to know what remarkable and excellent help we have in the staff that are serving our city. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. My next speaker is Jim Smith. Welcome, Jim. You have three minutes. Once you begin.
Hi. Jim Smith, paramedic, live in Ithaca. There's been some discussion about having unarmed first responders doing welfare checks. I'm going to suggest they start with City Hall. The city manager had stated that the fire department would be having a meeting reviewing the dispatch codes, the 55 that they stopped responding to, and that they would be vetted by a medical director. I tried to find out what the status of that was. I contacted the city manager on her line and left a message three times with no response. So I tried the deputy city manager twice, no response. I called this city manager's secretary, no response. I finally got through to her, and she suggested I call the fire department, no response. I asked the secretary if there's a policy to respond to citizens' inquiries. She said, "They don't, if they don't know anything." That's quite the mission statement. I mean, you guys are responsible for the city manager oversight. Is this how you want it? They're less responsive than the phone company and the cable company. I would like to know what the status of this review is. In the past several weeks, I've gone on calls that your constituents are calling 9114 for stroke, chest pain, and an unresponsive patient, and the fire department does not respond because they are not dispatched to it. We are having some calls where I'm thinking, "We were lucky. Our luck is going to run out." I contacted Dr. Koch, who the fire department used as a medical director when they quit responding to these 55 dispatch codes. He knew nothing about that. No one, you stopped responding to stroke calls, and nobody thought, "Maybe we should run this by a physician and see if it's a good idea." I can find no evidence. Ms. Molinaf seemed to imply that there were routine reviews with medical directors doing it. I can find no evidence of that. It would be helpful if she could present that evidence. So I would like to know what the status of this review is. The county's very interested in rapid EMS response, but you guys seem more apathetic. And then quickly, on the Astoria, I was working the day of the fire. Last week, they dispatched another overdose. You've had council people talking about being proud of what they've accomplished and worried about overpolicing. We're not there yet. I think if you see a body going out from there, that would focus you on the reality of the Astoria. Nothing to be proud about yet. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. My next speaker is Katie Church. Good evening. Welcome, and you have three minutes. Once you begin.
Hi. Thank you. I am here to talk about the contracts that we have with Flock cameras, which are surveillance cameras. We've had them since 2023. And so the concern is that Flock is being, the information that is collected by the Flock cameras is being accessed and used in ways that well-intentioned communities are not aware of and not in control of. So right now, even any person in this room's personal data could be being shared with ICE, over 21 New York State counties, law enforcement, universities, the FBI. This is not an exaggeration, but actually how the information is being used and shared. It was reassuring to hear the sheriff in a recent Tompkins County Legislature public safety meeting say that if there were breaches of security that he knew of, that he would certainly stop using Flock. But he also said that he doesn't know if ICE has access to it. As a sanctuary city, we have a decision to make. Either uphold the commitment to be a sanctuary city and end the contract with Flock, or rescind that commitment and continue with our Flock contract. We do know of other communities who have stopped using Flock because of the breaches of security and concerns for public safety. In early June this year, the Austin, Texas, city manager announced the city council will not vote on renewing the program. The decision came after several community members and city leaders spoke out against it during a council work session that included the Austin Police Department. He said, "Austin should not be participating in Trump's mass surveillance programs, and we have evidence that ICE is actively collaborating with Flock, and ICE essentially has a side door access to Flock's cameras and data sets, and that data is being used to enforce ICE actions." He also said that data could be shared with other agencies that track people seeking abortions and other gender-affirming care. So remember, that is a sanctuary city. That is a big part of what we are supposed to be protecting. Another example is in Elbert County, Colorado. The county commissioners decide to end their contract. One commissioner said, "The retention of data, how it's secured, who may or may not have access, and what it is used for are his primary concerns." And he noted that this technology has advanced so quickly that regulations haven't had a chance to catch up. So those are two examples, but there are many more examples in the recent, like, year or so that communities have stopped using Flock. We also are aware that beginning this fall, Flock customers, which the city of Ithaca is one, will be able to request video footage as well as just camera footage. And so we urge the city of Ithaca to move, to join the movement of conscientious local governments who are choosing to stop engaging in unregulated mass surveillance. And we ask that, in light of evidence of loopholes that allow abuses of the Flock system in other localities, that we pause the use and further installation of Flock cameras until we have completed a thorough and in-depth review of the risks and dangers to public privacy, and that we also adopt a comprehensive surveillance data policy because just kicking Flock out won't guarantee it won't happen in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. My next speaker is Kate Donahue. Good evening, Kate. You have three minutes. Once you begin.
Good evening. My name is Kate Donahue. I am the executive director of Cinemopolis, downtown Ithaca's nonprofit independent movie theater. We also have a number of our board members here tonight who I want to thank for coming this evening. I have two requests of the common council this evening, but first, I would like to start with some good news. Cinemopolis is thriving. We are attracting vibrant crowds. Many small cities have lost their independent theaters, but Cinemopolis continues to succeed because of support we have received from our community, including support from the county and the city. So I want to begin by expressing my gratitude. While Cinemopolis remains a beloved local institution, as you are aware, the area surrounding the theater has faced significant challenges. We want to encourage the city to do more to improve the experience people have as they journey toward doors. My first request is that the city work to improve conditions in the Green Street Garage. The garage is an important gateway to downtown Ithaca. Last week, it was the site of an assault. That incident is one of several that demonstrate the need for improvements. We need the garage to be clean and welcoming for everyone. Improved cleaning, security, and supervision will benefit hundreds of people each day. Addressing security concerns in a way that truly creates an environment that is safer for everyone is complex, but it is not impossible. In this case, it is absolutely necessary. Please make this area a priority. The second point I want to make is related to the Astoria Building, which continues to receive widespread attention. Those of us who work at Cinemopolis have witnessed challenges surrounding the building, and we've seen quite a few challenges experienced by our neighbors who are residents of the building. The city has emphasized that it has limited enforcement tools to ensure that improvements are made to building management. The city is able to advocate to state organizations that fund the project and other entities responsible for oversight. After the fire in Astoria on June 1st, that advocacy began. I am grateful for that. As the work to make improvements continues, I want to ask that this work proceed with urgency. From my vantage point, I can see that it is very easy to access that building, and as long as that remains the case, as long as there are not control over who can get in, it will remain an unsustainable situation. I also want to ask that we ensure that stakeholders who have in-depth knowledge of the challenges play a meaningful role in crafting solutions. My second request is that the common council ensure that this process proceeds with urgency, necessary transparency, and stakeholder input. It is the only way we can make the improvements we need. Thank you.
Thank you. My next, excuse me, my next speaker is Sue Pearlgood. Good to see you, Sue. Welcome. You have three minutes. Once you begin.
My name is Sue Pearlgood. I'm a 42-year resident of downtown Ithaca, a community activist, a former board chair of many nonprofits, including GAC, the Kitchen Theater, the Tourism Board of Tompkins County, and Cinemopolis. I also was one of the organizers of the Women's March in 2017, and I'm one of the organizers of the Reproductive Rights Film Festival at Cinemopolis. I'm currently a member of Cinemopolis and on the board. When I first moved to Ithaca from New York City in 1982, I had to travel back to the city to see the movies that I wanted to see. Then Cinemopolis opened, and I knew I could stay here. That was 40 years ago. I've been an avid moviegoer and supporter of Cinemopolis since, as I know many of you are too. I'm here this evening to talk about the Green Street Garage and access to Cinemopolis and the Commons for those who have disabilities. My husband has mobility issues, and we must park in the garage to go to the movies or onto the Commons. Each time we pull into the garage, I hope that one of the two handicap spots on each floor is available for us. Only two on each floor. That must change. Many of the people who go to the movies, eat out, or shop are older, and many have disability issues. Once we park, we then go to the elevator and hope, when the elevator doors open, that we aren't walking into excrement or urine, dog or human, and that the elevator doesn't smell and it's clean. I would expect ample handicap parking spots and clean elevators in any city I travel to. The current situation here is not pretty for locals and for tourists. I ask that the city pay very close attention to the availability of handicap parking and increase the number of spots for accessibility and keep the elevators in the Green Street Garage clean and safe. Providing a garage that is welcoming and clean is essential for making the theater I love and all of downtown Ithaca accessible. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. My next speaker is Josh Dolan.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mass surveillance is a crucial piece of the authoritarian apparatus that we now find ourselves living in. The federal government has morphed from its traditional role, a protector, to terrorizer. It is local government and civil society that can ultimately halt fascism in its tracks. As a sanctuary city, we must live our ideals and say no to invasive technologies, including the recently installed Flock cameras. I want to just take a moment to paint a picture for you of what I think we all know is coming. We've watched as ICE has terrorized immigrant communities, operating outside the laws, they kidnap innocent people many times without presenting warrants or identification. With the new ICE budget, that increases DHS by 15 times. We could see the writing on the wall. It's there in the rhetoric. It's there, written in black and white in the executive orders, targeting trans people, autistic people, people with mental health issues, the homeless, and those seeking abortions. It's not a matter of if this surveillance technology will be used in ways that go against our values, it's a matter of when. Our neighbors in Broome County have a far-right-wing sheriff who's already deeply in bed with ICE and their 287G agreement. The feds have made it perfectly clear that Ithaca and Tompkins County are targets. We implore you as lawmakers to connect the dots and dismantle this dangerous technological infrastructure of authoritarianism. You are our last line of defense. Thank you.
Thank you. My next speaker is, and forgive me if I mispronounce this, Dirk Trakey? Tracy. My apologies. Welcome. You have three minutes. Once you begin.
Thank you. In line with several other folks speaking out about Flock tonight, I'd like to read through a list of situations where the data has been misused, and you'll receive an email with links to all of the articles cited here. As reported by 404 Media, ICE is using Flock to pursue migrants. ICE doesn't have access to Flocks, they rely on outside people who do have access, typically police departments and individual officers. FOIA requests show ICE accessing data through police in Danville, Indiana. In Westchester, New York, data from RECOR, a different ALPR system, was shared with immigration agents for two years despite local laws against doing so. In 2023, 71 police departments in California shared Flock data with ICE and other agencies in spite of state laws. The Orlando Sentinel reports Florida state police querying the Flock system for ICE over 250 times between March 13th and May 5th of this year. In Oregon, local and federal officers, including ICE, were found sharing access to one another's surveillance capabilities, including Flock, in an email thread informally. Quoting 404 Media, "The emails show the extremely casual and informal nature of what partnerships between police departments and federal law enforcement can look like, which may help explain the mechanics of how local police around the country are performing Flock automated license plate reader lookups for ICE and HSI, even though neither group has a contract to use the technology." An ATF agent used the lovely Colorado Flock system to run queries for ICE after being granted system access for an unrelated crime. Once again, in a community where doing so was unlawful. Since Ithaca's Flock data is shared with other New York law enforcement agencies, what prevents a department affiliated with ICE through the 287G program, like Broome County or Madison County Sheriff's Departments, from accessing Ithaca's data on their behalf? Even absent 287G affiliation, the Houston Chronicle reports how few safeguards there are for accessing Flock data. Officers typed things like "farmer pickles" or "donut" as reasons for querying the system, sometimes even just mashing the keyboard at random and hitting Enter. Cal Matters has reported similarly vague and unspecified query justifications by California law enforcement. Ithaca's own data shows no standardization to query justifications. One is simply a license plate, another, another one just says suspicious. And migrants are not the only targets. The Chicago Sun-Times Electronic Frontier Foundation report Texas police using out-of-state Flock cameras to pursue a Texas resident that they suspected of having an abortion. Having recently reaffirmed commitments to sanctuary community values, we think it's more important than ever that those values are codified deeply into policies, practices, and procedures. People are correct when they say that residents are concerned about privacy in their data as these cameras appear amidst a volatile political moment. We are concerned. In light of this pattern of clear violations, we ask that you uphold the values publicly expressed in resolution.
Thank you. That is your time, but you may spend the rest of your comments in writing.
Interna-critically, I can't deploy it of this technology.
Thank you. My next speaker is Aaron Fernando. Welcome. You have three minutes. Once you begin.
Great. Hello, and thank you. I will also be speaking about the surveillance. Imagine that in a major U.S. city, drones similar to those used in warfare circle overhead and engage in persistent aerial surveillance. circle overhead and engage in persistent aerial surveillance. Imagine that the elected governing body is unaware that this surveillance is being conducted on the whole population because a billionaire from another part of the country chose to furnish the funding so that the police could surveil a population he's completely unfamiliar with. Imagine that most people, including elected officials, did not know about this program at all until it was reported in Bloomberg Business Week. If this sounds oddly specific, it's because this is precisely what did happen in Baltimore in 2016. And it's what can happen anywhere because for most municipalities in this country, there is no legal requirement for democratic oversight or public input into surveillance deployed in the name of our safety. I want to emphasize that this is not a Flock-specific problem. This is a broader, ongoing problem with a broader, ongoing legislative solution. There is, in fact, a tried and true solution already in force in a couple dozen cities, one that ensures that elected bodies and the general public have a meaningful level of oversight over what surveillance tech is used by law enforcement. It ensures that we can examine and audit the uses of this tech to make sure it's not being abused. This legislation was drafted by the ACLU, and it's referred to as COPS, which is an acronym that stands for Community Control Over Police Surveillance. It does not flatly ban surveillance, but puts some guardrails on it. This legislation should be understood as due diligence legislation. In many ways, it is a floor, a bare minimum for, uh, a bare minimum for ensuring democratic oversight around technology that tracks our movement and behavior. In Baltimore, a lawsuit actually settled the matter once it went to the U.S. Court of Appeals. The Baltimore Police, and therefore the city, lost that one. But the whole ordeal could have been avoided with a bit of due diligence legislation. Cities that have already passed some form of this legislation include Oakland, Berkeley, and San Francisco, Nashville, St. Louis, Pittsburgh, and even New York City. Flock came as a surprise to most of us, and this is by design. For surveillance companies like Flock, Ithaca is just another market in which to make money. It does not matter how this tech is used or if it's abused or if it's even necessary. And as you heard, it's already being abused. For us, though, Ithaca is home. And so here, the use and abuse of this tech does matter. In upcoming weeks, myself and others will be approaching you and having conversations about this legislation in addition to concerns about Flock. I'll email you all of this legislation, and I urge you to pass this, consider and pass this quickly because we can see the abuse and overreach coming down from the federal level, including ICE peeking at surveillance data it was not authorized to access. Thank you.
Thank you. My next speaker is Erica Bush. Welcome. You have three minutes once you begin.
Hi, I'm Erica Bush. I am also here to speak about Flock and just to add a voice of, with these violations at the national level in mind, keeping them front and mind, I also request that our local leaders uphold the values that they have publicly expressed in their resolutions reaffirming our community's commitment to the human rights protections. And I also ask that you revisit whether the things you've just heard about the Flock cameras fit with those resolutions. If not, I ask you to make our city's commitment to human rights protections for migrants, reproductive rights, and gender-affirming care not just a statement on a website, but an action that is codified and brings the values into the heart of the policies that we enact. I'm not asking you to act fast, but I am asking you to act smart. We have heard that our contract and the privacy protections around the Flock cameras here is not shared with ICE, is not shared with other places. We have also read news stories that that language is not enough to protect people. So a policy that is good when the people in power can be trusted, but bad if they can't, is at its core not a good policy. I respect that the original implementation of this system was completed thoughtfully and intentionally by many groups of people. But the country's political climate is not what it was when this technology was adopted here. And the policies for its use, as they currently stand, are not robust enough to protect people from the abuses of power we are seeing daily in the news. We are seeing daily news reports on the ways that this national administration is acting as though it were outside the law. And we are seeing the ways that the laws, as they are functioning now, are not stopping them. By reassessing the use of the Flock cameras at this time and taking the time to develop a secure, meticulously-planned-out policy for any future possible use of surveillance in our community, we are strengthening our capacity to not find ourselves on the back foot someday when we discover that our data, which is currently being collected 24/7, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, has ended up in the wrong hands or been used in the wrong ways. I would like to see us be able to not say we didn't know. Oh, we do know. And we could do something now so we don't have to say that later. Thank you.
Thank you. My last in-person speaker is Ashley Miller. Good evening. Welcome. And you have three minutes once you begin.
Thank you. I'm beginning to feel like a broken record. Before the election of Mayor Cantelmo, Ithaca had advisory commissions democratically made up of city residents with expertise and interest in particular issues affecting the city. I think there may be two of you that remember this. These advisory commissions, all with common council liaisons, are listed in the city charter. There are five of them. Four of them have disappeared from the city website. Under all previous mayors, common council had several standing committees made up of common council members. At their monthly meetings, concerned residents could speak, ask questions, and learn things, particularly at the well-attended and skillfully chaired Planning and Economic Development Committee and the Governance Committee. This was a quintessential experience in participatory democracy. And it's so different from the current restriction for those of us that are interested in what's happening in this city, which is a three-minute comment once a month. While dismantling the city's committee structure in early 2024, the mayor claimed that his reestablishment, that its reestablishment was a major priority of his, and he appointed a working group on commissions to come up with a reorganization. In response to an inquiry of the working group's progress and in February of this year, one of the group members reported that their work had been finished and sent to the mayor months ago. And they had expected that it would be an agenda item. In March, the mayor wrote to me that he expected to put it on the agenda in April. It is now August, adding up to quite a pile of months that the mayor has had the recommendations from the working group on commissions. So my question for the mayor is, you create the agendas. When are you going to take a step toward participatory democracy and put the reestablishment of committees and advisory commissions on the agenda? Thank you.
And my next speaker is Ariana Klinkoff on Zoom. Is she?
Yes.
Hi, can you hear us?
I can. I just want to make sure you can hear me.
Hold that thought because we can hear you so well. It is very loud. Just give us a second. Still real loud. Can you say something now?
Hi.
That's better. Welcome. Thanks for joining us remotely. And you have three minutes once you begin.
Please forgive me as I can't see my notes because I'm on Zoom. However, I wanted to relay an experience I had with the ILPC and state my support for a moratorium on expanding the historic district. In 2019, I bought a home in one of the historic districts. It was wrapped in tin siding. All of the exterior-facing windows were wrapped in metal. There were metal storm windows. The structure was damaged, and the entire rear wall of the home was falling out. The interior had carpeted floors, no original walls, and windows that no longer worked. We put $200,000 of work to make this home stand up, to be structurally sound, and to provide relatively affordable apartments for Ithaca people to live in. And then I found out that I was going to not be allowed to put in $700 historical vinyl reproduction windows that were highly energy-efficient. And I was told by the ILPC that I had to replace them, the interior windows, with wood windows at $10,000 in window cost. Might I add that you could not see a single one of these windows from the street, and not a single historical feature remained in the home? I was shocked by this. And frankly, then I was told there were tax rebates. While those tax rebate forms were certainly a mystery to me, a lawyer I hired could not figure them out. And though we applied, not a single cent was ever received in any of these supposed rebates the ILPC talks about. Further, there are enforcement issues. Every house around me in that area, also in the historic district, had replaced their windows with vinyl because their homes had been, you know, wrapped in vinyl siding and had the same issues. When I brought this up, they said, oh, well, they already did it. There's nothing we can do, but we can make you spend $50,000 to $80,000 on window replacement. I would just like to say that until there is some real consideration to the historic value of a home, what the public can see in that historic value, and the impact to people who are actually just trying to make homes remain standing in this community, that we not expand the historic district. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, it's quiet now. Testing. A little quiet. Well, with that, that concludes public comment. We'll now turn to Privilege of the Floor. I'll respond to a couple of things. First, I can assure, oop, I can assure Teresa Alt that I have never kept a zoning item off of the agenda and probably never will. Staff has been working on those updates. I know that they completed a survey based on those changes to share back out to the neighborhood in question. And the amendment sponsor has been in communication with me about some of the things that the planning staff are working on. We expect to see that, I think it's next month. To the speakers on Flock, I want to thank you for joining this evening. I am alarmed by some of what you've shared, and I'd like to hear from the administration in future on the safeguards and implications of its continued use. So thank you for advocating on behalf of the community for that. To the speaker who raised concerns about the commissions, thank you very much for your participation this evening. I do want to clarify that the advisory commissions had stopped meeting in 2022, not in 2024, because I was a commissioner, and they stopped meeting because of COVID. And I understand that the working group has met. I am not aware of whether or not there has been a final approval from the working group on the recommendations of the report. I know I've been shown a draft version of that. And as soon as it's submitted with the deputy clerk and finalized and approved, we can have it on the agenda. We also have updating charter revision efforts that are underway in the coming weeks, announced in the coming weeks. And then the last thing I just want to share, which is not an issue of public comment this evening, except for one written comment. But I did want to share, because there's been some interest in this community, that on September 18th, at the Downtown Ithaca Conference Center, Ithaca will be host to the first public meeting of the State Commission on Reparations outside of New York City. So for those of you who are interested in that issue, we will have state representatives from the commission here for that. And I'm only just sharing that part now as an announcement because there are people from the public here, and there usually isn't at the end of these meetings. With that, other colleagues, who would like to? All the person Keel and all the person Kumar.
Yes, I'll be brief tonight. I actually agreed with most of and would support most of the things that the community came forward with tonight. I'm very worried about the Flock cameras. We've been repeatedly assured by the administration that there's no way that there could be vulnerabilities in our systems. And I'm, um, I have a lot of reading to do tonight, it sounds like. And thank you for bringing this to our attention, and thank you for being here. I would support a speedy, speedy change to our policies on Flock, especially if there is, and it sounds like there is, substantial evidence to suggest that there are breaches, even if we have policies against sharing of that information. Second thing I will speak on tonight is the ILPC. I am consistently, and spoke on this when it came up for the first time, concerned about the aversion to a moratorium on the expansion of historic districts. I have spoken in favor of getting rid of historic districts and replacing them with a system that's equitable across the city. And I think that that may be too extreme for some of my colleagues, but I'm surprised, and the public in general, but I'm surprised that there's pushback on the moratorium on the expansion of historic districts. Part of the East Hill Historic District is in my ward. And College Town proper butts up to the East Hill Historic District. From my perspective, the East Hill Historic District was put in place to significantly reduce capabilities for increased housing in College Town. You can see a pretty clear dividing line, and I've spoken on this in the past as well. But if you drive down Eddie Street on the left, drive up Eddie Street towards Cornell's campus, on the left side of the street is a historic district. On the right side is not. There's no new development on the left side of the street, and there's significant new development on the right. On the left side of the street, you have houses that are literally fascias falling off the houses. And there are multiple buildings in the East Hill Historic District that have no one living in them. And there are broken windows. There is one house that had a fire that cannot sell and cannot be rehabilitated because it's too expensive to rehabilitate it with the historic standards. It actually blows my mind that it stands in so conflict with the priorities that we say we are for as a city. And I don't think that, I'm not saying that there's no value in historic preservation. In fact, I think that there's extreme value in historic preservation, and we should be carefully considering each building that we preserve. I think that the ILPC should still exist, and I think that they should have to make a case for each building that falls within, that is preserved historically. I think that that would be a much more equitable way of doing it. I think that the public would be better informed about why we're making those decisions as a city rather than arbitrarily kind of expanding districts. The last thing I'll say is on zoning reforms. The mayor mentioned in his comments that I have been in contact with him about the zoning reforms. I hope that those come before council next month. I'm still in support of changing the South Side zoning as we pass as a council. I think that this moment brings up important considerations and questions about the role and dynamics between council and the administration. And so I look forward to seeing those come before council. Thank you so much.
All the person Kumar.
Thank you to all of the members of the community who came to speak tonight. Thank you to the members of the Cinemopolis Board for coming and sharing your experiences and your perspectives. Thank you also for the work that you do, providing the service to the community. I think in the last week, I've gone like two or three times, maybe. So definitely something worth fighting for to me. And I also wanted to thank you for the compassion you've shown in sharing your frustrations for your neighbors despite the difficult circumstances. And I do think that as a council and as a city, we should be putting pressures on the, pressure on the administrators of Astari because ultimately, the residents are also victims of this poor management. In addition, the assault that happened at Green Street, I do think should prompt the council to look at our parking garages as a whole. I know there's been some discussion on the state that they're in, both on cleanliness and security. And, you know, I also think that should go hand in hand with reexamining the cost of our parking across the city. Right now, it is incredibly cheap, a dollar an hour, to park in the parking garages. And maybe increasing it a tiny bit And maybe increasing it a tiny bit would give us the ability to, you know, make it a much better place to park and be able to use that space to access the downtown without significantly increasing strain financially on the city. Additionally, about the flock cameras, I've actually spoken to Chief Kelly about the flock system in the past. This is something that I've been interested in. And I do understand that it brings benefits to our policing systems and even our work towards just some community-based policing in giving the, the city integral information on the way that we practice policing. And that's why I've supported it in the past years and why I do want to emphasize that I think it was implemented with positive intentions. But, you know, given the information that's been brought up today, especially given the federal government's fascist overreach in the last year, and given that we are potentially seeing the use of our city infrastructure, not only for invasive and unjust surveillance, but to be used by ICE in ways that go against our stated principles as a sanctuary city. I think that echoes what we heard from one of our speakers, which is that we shouldn't pass policies counting on good intentions from all future individuals administering them. I do think that a substantive reevaluation of our flock system to ensure at least that we have protections and policy guardrails against the information being used in these ways, if not honestly, an outright rejection of the system based on the information already presented to us, and that is already accessible online through reputable sources, is what we should be looking at if we're going to continue to call ourselves a sanctuary city. Excuse me. My colleague, Alderman Keel, he's mentioned in the past, and I bring this up a lot, is that we cannot be complying in advance. We can't become complacent and begin to normalize the illegal and racist actions being taken by our federal administration. And that's why I really want to especially thank the people who have come today to speak out about the flock system and bring it to our attention. I think just to, in conclusion, I would like to maybe direct my questions to the mayor or city attorney to maybe comment on what a legislative pathway for council towards that could look like. I hope my colleagues would be supportive of moving forward on this path, on looking at how we could have more community oversight, such as the due diligence legislation mentioned in Boston, Baltimore, Austin, and elsewhere as well. But yeah, thank you so much.
I won't respond because we're in privilege of the floor, other than to say, we have two advice of council sessions this evening, and I think you're welcome to ask that question to the city attorney as part of that. All the person Shapiro is next.
Thank you. Like Patrick, I agreed with a lot of the things that were said tonight. I think a lot of us had like some pause when we talked about cameras last year, or at least I know there was some like hesitation, but I thought at the time, we were all thinking, wow, this is like an inexpensive tool to give the police department, so we don't have to continue to invest in, in human resources in the police department. But I think certainly the comments that were made tonight, it's, it's hard not to be swayed by the, it's hard not to be swayed by the people that come to public comment just by, but I think this is something to look into. I mean, it feels like this is something that I think somebody said, you know, it's not like you can't say, we didn't know anything about this. Once you know something, you got to do something. And I think it's our duty now to figure out if we know something. So I think if we, I think assuming that, I would, I would, to Ms. Kumar's question, like, I would also like to know what's the next step because I think that there is some, even if, and I was certainly heard from, I remember hearing from Chief Kelly as well that there's a lot of safeguards in place. But I, but as soon as everyone started thinking, talking about it tonight, I'm thinking, what technology does the CIA have to get into flock? And probably very good technology to get into flock. So whatever safeguards we have, I'm sure the federal government has better technology to get, to avoid those safeguards. So I'd like to thank them bringing, I'd like to thank the public for bringing that to our attention. I just want to say for the person that was talking about committees, that's been something I've been harping on since I've been elected. And I, I do think there's been some positive movement in that direction. So I take the mayor at his word that we are moving in the direction where we will have some advisory committees, and we will be looking at our charter to see how we can kind of institutionalize those, whatever comes from those, from those conversations. So it's, I wish we've been doing it for the last year and a half. I think you know that, I've said that to you. But I'm happy to know that we're moving in a way that there's some progress. So I hope the public will give a little bit of latitude as we work towards having actual meetings that, that start planning for these committees. And we've done some, some behind the scenes stuff already. So we've already been working on what these committees might look like and how they might be envisioned. The last thing I want to say, and I heard everyone from, from Cinemopolis and, there's a money solution to things like, you know, how to keep elevators clean and, and things like that. And I really hope that we could figure out how to have a money solution to make sure there aren't feces in our, in our garages. But I wanted to say, like, I don't know the right way of evaluating if there's enough handicap parking, but that's a non-money issue. You can paint, you can designate parking spaces as handicap parking spaces when you choose to. I think what you can't do is undesignate them. So I think once you mandate, once you designated a handicap spot, it's there for, I don't know what the process is to remove it. But I would say, like, I would hope the people working for the, the city hear that and evaluate, do we have enough handicap parking spaces? Because we literally just need blue paint and the, and the thing to add a few more. They're still paying customers. It's not like it's a, I mean, it's such a cost neutral. And if it's something that is going to benefit the people that, or a segment of people that attends Cinemopolis, I think we should just do that. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, all the person, all the person Fabrizio, you're next.
Yeah, I also want to thank everybody for coming this evening and bringing many things before us. I did a tour of the parking garages last week, all of the parking garages, actually, maybe two weeks ago. And it was, it was illuminating. It definitely underscored all of the things that we've been hearing from the DIA and, and from Cinemopolis. And I am truly sympathetic to all of this, but more than sympathetic. I want to see us fix this. I just sent an email to my colleagues earlier today with photographs that I took when I did the tours. I don't think that the issue is money for fixing this. We, we have staff that is assigned to the parking garages. And I think if you go from the garages that the city's managing to the garage that is being privately managed, it's a completely different world. Maybe we need a new piece of equipment. I mean, they manage to keep their floors clean. Their lights are on. There, there is not urine in the, you know, I mean, it is, it is just unacceptable what we're doing right now. And I have brought this before us before, and I will continue to push on this until we have some changes in how we're, how we're operating. I also want to say that I echo the request for the city manager to update us with regard to Astari, with regard to what our next steps might be for ensuring that people who are living there are living in a safe environment and are getting the services that we expected them to be getting, that the building is secure, that is not continuing to, that we are not continuing to have just endless calls there every day for our fire and police departments. This is, I think, one of our most urgent issues that we need to, that we need to deal with. Just to echo about the handicap spots, that's just such a no-brainer. Like, can't we fix this immediately? I think it's not just in the garages. I've also heard comments from people just around town that we just don't have enough handicap parking spaces. So I would like to see that happen. I want to also mention and thank Jim Smith for, for bringing up about the IFD codes again. And thank you for your persistence with this. I am sorry to hear that this is all still hanging. We started talking about this so long ago now. And I would like to have the city manager respond to, to us and to the public with regard to where the, what is the status? We're talking about potential life and death situations for residents in this community. And we need to know what codes are not being responded to. We need to get the department responding to whatever is the recommendation from the appropriate health officials that we should be, that we should be talking to. Echo on the, on the commissions. I'm super excited to try to, to get people engaged in this way. And to that end, I do want to just mention that the sidewalk manager has launched a program, and the deadline's coming up really soon for people to be able to give input on prioritizing sidewalk repair for the 2026 sidewalk plan. And I'm not 100% sure if the link is on the website, but you can reach out to anyone here in the city if it's not on there. There is a survey form that can be filled out. Or you can go to the See Click Fix link and also put in your, the most egregious sidewalks that, that you are aware of. You can also do potholes on that, on that link. And I suggest that, that we do that and try to have, to bring a kind of intentionality to the sidewalk program that I think would be super, super helpful for the city. So thank you so much for coming out, everybody.
All the person Brown.
First, I want to thank everybody for coming out and speaking. I really enjoyed hearing everything that I heard tonight. I always look forward to Teresa and Jim every month. So thank you all for being our sidekicks. I really first wanted to, I think Wynne had asked who's in support? And I, and everything that he mentioned was worthwhile to block Seneca Street, right? I do believe that it is our right in our community to share what we feel in the way that we need to feel if we're not harming or hurting anyone. But sharing and, and bonding together to let people know that we are disappointed, that we are sad, that we want to do something together as a community. And I see nothing wrong with that. So Wynne, I support it. I'm very excited and glad to hear so many people come out tonight and talk about flock. Because I remember when it was first brought to us on council, I had an uncomfortable feeling about it back then because I felt uncomfortable when we put any type of surveillance out. I know what communities first are targeted, and we'll get the brunt of it, right? So I'm concerned about, you know, the information being shared. But I'm also shared, I'm also concerned about the people who will get hurt the most or the most vulnerable. And we see what's happening right now. So thank you all for coming out. And I do want to say, welcome back. I feel like I ain't seen you all in a long time. Not that I missed you, yes, I did. But we had a month off, and we really haven't seen each other. So hi. Thank you all for coming out.
Hello. All the person Letterman, you're next.
Yes, thank you to the folks talking about flock. That is an area of enormous concern, so I appreciate that being highlighted. Thank you to the folks talking about accessibility in the Green Street garage. That's a concern, and I'm glad that was brought up again tonight. I just want to add one other thing to the conversation about historic preservation. Earlier today, I got an email with next month's agenda. And this is, I think, the 10th, 10 months from when it was, a constituent of mine first applied to put new windows on their home. There was a site visit to this person's home, and now there are probably 20-something photos in order of different parts of the interior of the home and the design of the windows in order to get a certificate of appropriateness. I also got a call earlier today from someone who told me who, who lives downtown that he has windows that are leaking into his home, but that he does not want to go to the ILPC to replace the windows because he's been told it will simply cost too much. And I think that's sort of a data point, albeit an anecdotal one, to show that not everything that comes up in sort of ILPC approvals represents what's really going on in terms of the long carryover time, and then also people who simply don't apply. And so those were just two different data points, albeit anecdotal today, that I think deserve our attention. So thank you again, everyone, for coming today, and I look forward to hearing about the audit.
With that, I will go ahead and, and privilege of the floor, move to consent agenda. May have someone move consent, move by all the person Mato, second by all the person St. Perez, all those in favor of consent. That carries unanimously. I'll also, before we do the audit presentation, maybe just look for a motion to do a five-minute recess while the folks empty the room. All the person St. Perez moves, all the person Keel seconds, all those in favor of a five-minute recess. Unanimous. 7:29. 2021 audit. That's how I feel too. What a great birthday present.
Yes. Good evening. Um, so I, um, am glad to be back, um, to discuss the completed audit or the final audit. Um, you got reports last week. Um, and I kind of want to hit some of the highlights, um, and then entertain any questions that any of the council members have. Um, so there are three different documents that you received from us at the conclusion of the audit process. Uh, there's the financial statements, including the auditor's report and all of the information included with that. And then there's also two different letters that we issued as a result of the audit process. I wanted to touch on those letters first, um, and, and go through some of the highlights of those. Uh, the quicker one that I'll talk about first, uh, is what we call the communication letter. Um, those of you that are kind of looking for that, it's a, the, the first page has a header that says communication with those charged with governance at the conclusion of the audit. Auditing standards require that we communicate certain aspects of the audit with, uh, council, with governance, uh, at the conclusion of that process. And that's what that's for.
This is, can I say something?
Uh, no, not at this time. Well, that's at the presentation for being a clarifying question. All the person, all the person, you're not recognized.
Is what, just mention the year.
The 2021 audit is in fact completed in your agenda packet. That, but all the person you're.
I'll, I'll bring it up.
So, the, the communication letter, um, covers those things that auditing standards require, um, you know, be communicated at the conclusion of that audit process. Most of that letter is boilerplate language. Um, there is a reference in here just to the overall difficulties that we had in completing the audit, uh, due to the, you know, delays and difficulties in getting things complete. And then I did want to point your, uh, point your attention to the last page of that communication letter, uh, that references a kind of a summary of some of the, um, uh, corrected misstatements that were, uh, made as part of the audit process. Um, so I just wanted to mention that those are there for you. And then the other letter that you have, um, is entitled, it's, it's headed management comment letter. Um, so the comment letter just summarizes, uh, the comments that we made as part of the audit process. Most of these comments that are included here are also included in the financial statements in a little bit more detail, a little bit different format. Um, but I just wanted to mention them here. Um, the first couple of comments that are on page two of the management comment letter, those are comments that have been made in, in audits prior to the 2021, uh, audit and, and, uh, our continuing comments here. Um, one comment, the, the first comment with respect to capital project accounting. Um, so the city doesn't record, uh, capital projects within the financial software system. It's done in spreadsheets, kind of off book, if you will, uh, which tends to make things more difficult, more prone to, to error because it's not all, all contained. Um, and then the second comment down the middle of page two with respect to fixed asset accounting, kind of a similar comment. Uh, the city's tracking of fixed assets is also done, uh, in Excel spreadsheets, uh, which again makes it prone to error, to things being, uh, missed. We did find some pretty significant formula errors during our 2021 audit, uh, which caused some, some changes to be made in some of that fixed asset activity. The very bottom of page two and continuing on to page three, uh, references the fact that we did have some fairly significant adjustments, uh, that we made as part of the audit process. Those were all corrected and the financial statements that you have include those corrections. Uh, but we did want to point out, you know, that those significant, uh, adjustments were made. Um, on page three, there's reference to a compliance issue. Of course, the, um, single audit is filed late. Uh, it's due nine months after year end. So, the 2021 audit was due September 30th of 2022. Um, and of course, that's late. And then finally at the bottom of the third page, uh, reference to a significant deficiency, which is a little bit less, a little bit less of an issue than material weaknesses in terms of categorization. Um, and that's simply a, you know, a matter of reports for, uh, for the ARPA funding, uh, that didn't have a, a, a level of review that they probably should have had. Okay. Uh, there is one comment made on the fourth page, which is again, less significant. So, this is something that's, you know, not significant enough to be in the report itself, but is something that we've reported on in the past. And that just relates to, uh, the fact that the city hasn't, hasn't had a physical inventory of capital assets, uh, in quite some time. It makes it more difficult to determine if all of your capital assets are properly being accounted for. Uh, and so, you know, recommend that the city have a physical inventory done. So, those are all the comments, um, in the management comment letter. And then finally, the financial report itself, um, which obviously is the biggest piece that you got. Um, and, you know, I, I hesitate to go into a lot of detail about the numbers because they are quite old at this point. Uh, but I will say, you know, really the financial statements, other than the timing of them, other than the fact that they are, uh, quite late, the financial statements are pretty good. Um, there was, uh, an increase in fund balance in the general fund, um, of, I'm trying to find that page, of about almost $6 million during 2021. So, fund balance at the end of 2021, uh, in the general fund was roughly 16 and a half million dollars. Um, in total, uh, fund balance was a little bit more than $50 million, which was an increase of about 10 and a half million from the end of 2020 to the end of 2021. Um, on the government wide basis, uh, there was a decrease in net position, uh, mostly because of some, some of the, um, actuarially estimated numbers, uh, post-employment benefits, uh, the pension system, um, obligations. Uh, so the net deficit of the city increased from about 62.3 million to about 65.6 million at the end of 2021. Um, if you're not going to read through the entire, uh, financial report, I'd encourage you, if nothing else, to read through the management's discussion and analysis. That section, um, summarizes really well the overall financial picture of the, of the city. Uh, it provides some charts and graphs that are kind of helpful in, in determining kind of where things are from a financial standpoint without going into, you know, a lot of great page after page after page detail. Um, so I'd, I'd encourage you to look through that. There's also a section in there towards the end that kind, has kind of a looking forward section. It's kind of weird because it's looking forward, but it's really kind of looking back, you know, because of the timing of the financial statements. Uh, the statements themselves, um, page six through page eight, uh, are the government wide financial statements. So, these pages take all of the funds, put them together, include the fixed assets of the city, uh, include all of the long-term debt, um, your share of the statewide pension obligation, uh, your actuarially calculated, um, um, obligation for retiree health insurance. So, those, those kind of have taken everything impact, uh, everything altogether, um, perspective. And then the fund basis financial statements begin on page nine. Those show, you know, the general fund, the special grand fund and all of the non-major funds. Um, there are quite a few pages of notes to the financial statements. Uh, those begin on page 15 and go all the way through to page 53. Uh, and then after that, towards the back, there are some supplemental information, some budget schedules, some additional schedules on the pension system. Um, and then, um, after that, reports on compliance and control. Uh, one of them for the city as a whole and then a second one specific to the federal programs, uh, that the city administers. Um, page 67 of the ballot packet includes a listing of all the different federal programs that the city, uh, spent money under, uh, a total of about seven and a half million dollars in federal money was spent during 2021. About 5.3 million of that was highway, uh, planning. Uh, about a million dollars of it was, uh, um, community development block grant funding. Uh, a little bit less than a million, uh, in ARPA funding was spent during 2022 and then a few other odds and ends. Um, and then after that, um, page 70 through 72 are kind of those same findings that I mentioned in the comment letter, but again, in a different format. So, that's kind of the highlights of where things are and open it up to questions.
Thank you. Before we turn to questions, I do need, um, someone to move and second our resolution for discussion. All the person Saint Perez, can you please read the single resolved and move?
Understood. Uh, resolved that the independent auditor's report for the period January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2021, prepared by the accounting firm of Insero Advisors LLC, be accepted to comply with the city's applicable governmental accounting standards board statement 34 and other related audit and single audit requirements.
Thank you. All the person is there a second? Second by all the person Shapiro. And now discussion, all the person Brown.
First, I'd like to apologize. Sorry.
It's a long vacation.
I know.
We're all out of here. We're at a practice.
I was disrespectful. I'm sorry. Um, so I just wanted to clarify that when we speak and the community is looking, if you say I completed the audit, they, you know, this community know the audits, there's quite a few that haven't been done. So, I, I just was saying to make it clear to the community, this is the audit for 2021.
Correct.
It's been completed.
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
All the person Saint Perez.
So, um, first I just wanted to clarify, um, in terms of page numberings, because many of us probably will be reading this on PDF.
Yes.
Page five has like 10 to 15 sub-pages that are full pages, right?
Yes, they are. Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Correct.
I was initially confused by that. And if anyone's going to try to read through all of this, I figure we should get that.
Yeah.
Established.
Thank you.
For the public. Um, in terms of, uh, recommendations that we should move to new programs, et cetera.
Mm-hmm.
Right? For not using Excel.
Mm-hmm.
Obviously, we can't have done that in the past. Um, so, in terms of moving forward and for our next couple of audits that are still outstanding, what, what could we do given what we have now to make it easier, more effective? Obviously, this took some time.
Mm-hmm. Right, right. Um, so I guess I would, I would say a couple of things. Obviously, the audits for 22, 23, 24, um, are going to use the same system, right? Um, um, so I guess the only thing that I can say in terms of trying to speed things up is making sure that they're, uh, that all the formulas are right, that, you know, the numbers make sense, that things balance. Um, as I said, we did find some, some difficulties, particularly in the fixed asset, uh, numbers that, um, caused some adjustments to be made.
Understood. Um, yeah. Is there anything else that, is there anything else that we, that, that had, in retrospect, had we done, would have made the process on your end quicker or more effective?
Um, I guess from, I mean, from the perspective of, from, from the perspective of council, I don't know. Uh, I mean, it, you know, obviously, like everything else that happened in 2021 and that time COVID, I know that there were some staff furloughs, there were some staff, um, um, retirements, you know, there were some gaps in time. Uh, that obviously had an impact. Um, had that not happened, it probably would have been better.
Understood. Thanks.
All the person Shapiro.
I should have listened more carefully when Pierre asked you the question about page numbers. So, forgive me, but I'm looking at page 39 or 66. It's where we look at long-term debt and liabilities.
Sure.
Actually, forgive me. I know it's 41 or 68.
Yep.
The way I'm reading this is we have $103 million in long-term debt and bond, in bonds, but there's another 28 million in interest. That's 131 million dollars in, in debt.
Yep, correct.
Previous page has like roughly $4 million in short-term debt. Is that the total picture of debt that the city has? Am I reading that, understanding that correctly?
So, the, the short-term debt actually on, on page 38, uh, so the city's short-term debt, uh, is about 15.8 million dollars.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right. And then, um, and then the long-term debt, as you said, um, on page 41 is 103.
Okay.
A little bit more than 103 million.
Okay. So, granted, these are a few years old. We've. Okay. So granted, these are a few years old. We've borrowed money. We've paid back money. Roughly, though, we're looking at about $145 million in debt for this year. Our, I didn't remember seeing where our annual budget was for this year. It was probably roughly about 100 million, probably a little less than that. And is there an opinion that you can give on that kind of ratio when you're, the amount of money you owe is greater than your actual annual budget? Is there, is there any kind of financial opinion that comes with that kind of situation?
I guess I wouldn't say an opinion. The one thing that I will say is that you are within the constitutional debt limit. As of the end of 2021, you were at about 59% of the debt limit. So, you know, you weren't exceeding that limit. I guess that's good news.
Okay, that's really the only question I have for this. I want to get to, you know, future audits, so I don't want to dig too much into the details here tonight, so I appreciate getting to this point. I do have one question, though, that it might be for the staff, but it'll help me at future budgets. There was one page when we were breaking down the expenses, and it was by departments, or not really by departments, but it was very broad-based departments. There was one thing that said culture and recreation, and it jumped from eight to 13 million. And I understand what recreation is, I believe, but I don't think we added an extra $5 million in our recreation budget that year.
I can jump in on this and be corrected by the administration if I'm wrong. But for those of you on council who last year was your first budget cycle, the administration, I would say optimized things to be department-based. That's not the categorization that existed in prior years. For example, all the person win, and the city manager can correct me if I'm wrong, public safety used to be like an amalgamation of the entire police budget and fire department and other stuff. So like, I think point well taken. Not a categorization that we use from present day.
So I won't see this on like present-day audits. Is that true? I'm looking at either page 5D or 25, but it talks about program expenses, and there's general government support, public safety, transportation, economic assistance and opportunities. So far, they all make sense to me. And then we get to culture and recreation. And with such a huge increase, I wonder, I just wonder what that is. I mean, after that, you get home and community-based services, then your debt. But if you're also telling me this isn't in future audits, and I don't have to worry about this when we see our present-day audit, then I'll just kind of move on.
This wouldn't be in the 2025 audit or forward because of the budget that we approved last year. I wouldn't myself speculate, nor would I ask the administration to speculate on the categorizations of previous administrations. But this would be a legacy of that.
Yeah, I guess I, I'll let it go, but I guess I reserve the right for myself. If it goes from eight to 13 million this year, and then we see culture and recreation is 22 million next year, I might want to get into the detail a little bit, even though it's old.
Right. So one thing I will mention there, so that page that you're looking at, so this, this particular figure is part of the government-wide presentation. So it does include things like depreciation on fixed assets that wouldn't be in the fund numbers. It also includes things like the total employee benefits get allocated to all those different functions. You see, if you look at that program expense line, there isn't a line for employee benefits. That's because they're kind of sprinkled into each one of those. And sometimes that allocation might change from one year to the next. So, you know, a swing of that size might be a thing like a different way of allocating depreciation expense or a different way of allocating benefit expenses.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Sure.
All the person Fabrizio.
I just wanted to ask, could you elaborate? You said there were significant adjustments, and could you just give us some sense of like what those areas were and how much money we're talking about?
Sure. Yep, yep. So let me just go to that page, just so I can see it. So so there's, there's really two different adjustments. One of them is kind of an amalgamation of several different things that we referred to in our, in our schedule in that communication letter. So one of them is the way that the city calculated the ARPA money. So ARPA money is a little bit weird in the way it gets calculated because you don't recognize it as revenue until you spend it. And before that, it stays as unearned revenue. The city spent about $950,000 in ARPA money during 2021, but didn't recognize that revenue in the general fund in the financial statements. So one of the adjustments that we made was to recognize that revenue and recognize the expenses in the general fund. So that didn't have an effect on fund balance because it increased revenue and it increased expenditures. And then the other adjustment is kind of, there were, there were differences in cash. There were differences in accounts receivable, and there were differences in accounts payable between between what was recorded in the general ledger and what we could verify. And so there were adjustments made to bring all those things into proper balance in the general fund. The net effect of that was to increase fund balance by about $1.9 million. And then in the other funds in total, the net effect of that was a decrease in fund balance of about $1.1 million.
I also just wanted to ask, you mentioned that the deficiencies that you noted had been noted for a number of previous years. Can you give us a sense of how long we're talking about?
So the first couple of comments that I mentioned, the one respect with related to capital project fund accounting and the one related to fixed asset accounting, those were ones that had been reported previously. I honestly don't know how long it's been. But I know it's, I know it's been there for a few years.
Several years before this. Thank you.
Yep.
All the person Letterman. Oh, I'm sorry, all the person Keel.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for being here. It's good to see you again. So I first wanted to start by saying that I think, you know, the frustrating and difficult thing for me when reading through this is that it just brings up so many questions that I know cannot be answered by this document because we're, you know, now four years behind. Like, these numbers aren't even accurate anymore. I mean, we could be anywhere else. I mean, it just but to that end, I'll start with something that's maybe a little bit more relevant to where we are now. There is a line in the, I can't see what document it is while I'm on it, of course, but difficulties encountered in performing the audit. You talked about this a little bit in your opening statements, but the, the actual line in here is "We encountered significant difficulties and delays in obtaining information needed to complete the audit." I would like to hear a little bit more about what that looked like. From your perspective, was that unanswered emails? How long were those delays? I mean, it's been, you know, four years now, so I assume significant. But I just would like to hear a little bit from you about that.
Sure. Yep. I mean, I guess I wouldn't say it was things like unanswered emails. I think it would, it would be like answered emails and say, yes, we'll get that to you. And then weeks would go by, and we wouldn't hear anything. You know, every so often, you know, we would reach out again and say, hey, we're, you know, still waiting for this and this and this. But it took a long time to get stuff.
Would you say that those instances are the primary reason that we are four years behind on our audits?
I would, yeah.
Okay. And would you say that you've noticed any change in the efficiency of the city's operations in getting information in the last year and a half?
I would say that there's been renewed emphasis to try to get caught up.
Okay. Lovely. Thank you. I have some questions for the administration, but I think I will save them for the city manager's report. I wanted to ask about some of the fixed errors that are on the bottom of that same document that you were just discussing. I'm a little confused at how to interpret this. I'm not an accountant, and just a little bit, could you think you could walk us through the schedule of corrected misstatements for the year ended December 31st, 2021? What are we looking at here?
Sure. Yep. So, so this is on the last page of the communication letter, or those of you that are trying to find it. So the top table in that, in that schedule, this shows the government-wide impact of those adjustments that were made. Okay. And so you can see the first line there is that recognition of ARPA revenue that I was mentioning before. And so the effect of that entry was to increase revenues and to increase expenses. So no effect on fund balance for that, for that adjustment. The second entry down there, adjusting the cash, the receivables, the payables. The effect of that entry in the government-wide perspective is a decrease in assets in total of about $1.2 million and a decrease in liabilities of a little bit more than $2 million. So the net effect of that is, is an increase to fund balance, to net position, of about $800,000. And then over to the right, you can see how that fund balance increase came about. An increase in revenues of $1.1 million, an increase in expenses of about $300,000. Okay. The next table down shows those same entries, but just the effect on the general fund. So again, you see the same ARPA revenue entry because that was all in the general fund. And then the same types of entries, but different, different amounts because the general fund was affected differently from the overall government perspective. And again, the general fund had an increase in fund balance of about $1.9 million. That's because assets declined a little bit, $130,000, but liabilities declined a little more than $2 million as a result of all of those adjustments. And then the third table down shows the effect on the non-major governmental funds, which is everything except for general funds, special grant, and capital projects. And again, that just shows the adjustments to cash receivables, payables, and the net effect there. And again, in the, in the other funds, it's a decrease in fund balance of about $1.1 million because assets declined a little more than $1 million. Liabilities increased just a little bit, $30,000. And so the net effect on fund balance there is a decrease.
Okay. Thank you so much. It's very helpful. Again, not an accountant, did this two days ago, read through this two days ago. I think that we have a net position deficit of 65, roughly $65.5 million, 65.6.
Yep.
And from my understanding and through reading through this, that's mostly because of retiree healthcare liabilities through OPEB.
Yes, correct. Other post-employment benefits is what that stands for, yes.
Is most of that, is most of that healthcare liabilities?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
But is there any flexibility at the city level for what that looks like? And apologies if you don't know the answer to this. Is that included in the healthcare consortium? How are we paying for that? What does that look like?
Right. So, so a couple of things. I guess one thing that I'll preface this by saying, most municipalities are in this same type of situation.
Okay.
And that's because these retiree health insurance obligations, you don't have money set aside, and there is no mechanism to set money aside. So there's a liability with no asset. So, you know, the city is not alone by any stretch in having a negative net position strictly because of this.
Okay.
So it's not something, I won't say don't be concerned about it, but I'll say, understand that most municipalities are in that same boat.
Okay.
The, the numbers themselves are mainly actuarial estimates. So the city hires an actuarial firm to come in, look at all of the employees of the city, make estimates as to how long those people are going to work. Are they going to retire? Are they going to get a health insurance benefit when they retire? How long are they going to live after they retire? All those things are estimates that are done by the actuary. And then they also try to determine, you know, what are healthcare costs going to be in 15 years? They make all those estimates and come up with a huge insane number.
Are, are there things we could be doing now, and again, these numbers are four years behind, but to be limiting our future liability when it comes to other post-employment benefits?
Right. I mean, really, what it comes down to is as best you can, changing employment contracts. Right? Because these benefits, generally speaking, are things that are provided for in union contracts.
Which I want to just quickly interject, which we did two years ago.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Another, another one for you. I was concerned overall with the accounting errors. I think for me, I'm glad that there weren't more significant deficits in some of the things we saw, especially considering kind of the structures we had in place. I'm happy to see, and we've heard from the administration, that we're getting munis up and running. And hopefully, four years from this audit, we'll be making progress on that. I want to know if in your conversations with the administration, if there was an emphasis on limiting future accounting errors? And if you think that the movement towards new software will, will help limit that? Yeah, I'll leave it there.
I'd say yes to both of those. I mean, definitely, that's something that trying to limit future errors, and I think getting all the software together would help.
Lovely. Okay, that's all I've got for you. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
It's good to see you.
Any, any new speakers before I recognize as someone who's spoken already? Seeing none, all the person Brown.
Thank you very much, yeah. We still have an opening for controller. So my questions is, I'm truly impressed by all the work that's happened. And I was thinking, what could council have done differently? Because I've been here for, this will be four years. And what could we have done differently that we don't fall? But you just answered the question that most, you know, this happens often.
Right.
But what could have been differently done? Because I really had Steve in high esteem, right? Because we didn't know. I don't think we really even knew. Well, I won't speak for anybody else on the council. I didn't even know how far behind our audits were. And how, for one question is how often should we do audits? And what can we do as council to offset that this doesn't happen again?
Right.
Because you're talking to us about 2021.
Sure.
And how relative is that to 2024 and 2020? Not really much, right?
Right.
So it's really like over conversation, right? Something we should have had in the past. So my question is just really, what can we do? What, what could happen in working together as a city, in a council, and the manager, and the mayor, that we, we are, we never get this far behind?
Right, right.
Yeah.
I, I guess I'd say the, the thing that the council can do more than anything else is awareness. And as you said, you know, you didn't realize how far behind you were. And I think because there's not, and I don't want to say that nobody was aware, but because there wasn't more pressure, perhaps, things were allowed to just get farther and farther behind.
I think that's clear, yeah. So thank you very much.
With that, let's go to a vote on the 2021 audit. All those in favor. There we go. Okay. The carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome.
One down, three to go. All right, we move. We're moving to two member filed items. We didn't have session in July, so there are just two items that staff gave me that I filed on their behalf. We didn't have session in July, so they're just two items that staff gave me that I filed on their behalf. The first is the Stewart Avenue Bridge over Fall Creek rehabilitation. This is, I will move, whereas a project for the rehabilitation of Stewart Avenue Bridge over Fall Creek is eligible for funding under Title eighty-three of the U.S. Code as administered by the Federal Highway Administration. As amended, that calls for the apportionment of costs to be borne by the ratio of eighty percent federal funds and twenty percent non-federal funds, so on and so forth, as written. I will read the resolved. Council duly convened hereby resolve that the common council approves the project and be it further resolved that the common council hereby authorizes the city to pay in the first instant one hundred percent of the federal and non-federal share of the scoping preliminary design, detailed design, R O W incidentals, R O W acquisition, construction and construction support and inspection work for the project thereof. And be it further resolved that the common council amends capital project nine ten by four point four three zero and change million dollars. It is in the resolution. For an amount not to exceed the sum of five point nine six approximately million dollars is hereby appropriated for the issuance of serial bonds with repayment of federal share being four point seven six zero and change million dollars and the New York State share being eight hundred and ninety-two thousand and change. And the city's estimated share of the project cost not to exceed five percent or three hundred and six thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars. And made available to cover the cost participation in the above phases of the project and be it further resolved that the common council, the city of Ithaca hereby agree that the city should be responsible for all costs of the project, including costs to exceed the amount of reimbursement available for the award amount to the city of Ithaca and be it further resolved that in the event of the cost of the project exceeding the amount appropriated above, common council shall convene at the earliest possible opportunity to appropriate said excess amount upon the notification by the engineering staff or New York State Department of Transportation. Be it further resolved, the city manager, so on and so forth, authorized to sign any necessary documentation. Be it further resolved that the superintendent of public works is hereby authorized to administer the above project and be it further resolved that the city of Ithaca will be responsible for the maintenance of the project and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be filed with New York State Commissioner of Transportation by attaching it to any necessary agreement in connection with the project and therefore be it further resolved, this resolution shall take effect immediately. May I have a second? Second by all the person Matos. And John is online to answer any questions y'all have about this project. All the person Saint Perez.
Unfortunately, my question is directed at the city attorney. As always, these days with anything involving federal funds, I'd need to ask our attorney, should we be worried?
I wish I had a crystal ball that could tell you what the federal government is going to do, but I do not. I don't have any particular reason to believe that there will be an issue with this one, but one never knows.
Understood.
All the person Fabrizio.
I have a couple of questions and thank you, Jonathan, because I know you've, you've answered a few of them. A couple of comments, which I've discussed a little bit with him already, but I just want to mention. So there was bridge work done not so very long ago. I think it was two thousand and nine, or maybe it was a little bit after that, Jonathan. And I'm just hoping that when we do, that this redesign and maybe upgrade of materials will last a bit longer because it's just extraordinary how fast the stuff has rusted. And it's, it's a lot of money. And I also, you know, I get it that three hundred and six thousand dollars is a huge bargain on a project like this, assuming that we get the federal money. But I, I, we never talk about this and I'm just, I'm just curious, like, we have to bond for this before we get any of this money, right? We have to bond for this money and spend this money before we get reimbursed.
Yeah, all, 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 yes, there are.
Right, right. So, so in the end, does anybody have an estimate on how much this actually costs us when you, once you factor in interest on the five point nine million dollars?
About three hundred thousand dollars.
Plus the interest is what I'm asking. Like, what is the interest that?
The cost to the city, the share that the city pays for this project overall is captured in that five percent.
If that includes the interest, the three hundred and six thousand dollars? Are you looking at Wendy?
I am.
Do you know the answer to that, Wendy?
I, I usually refer to Wendy as well for the bonding costs. I know in the past, Steve Thayer, we always said at the engineering department, please include in this resolution whatever you need for your bonding costs.
So that's how you calculated it, Jonathan?
As a, as a department, we've definitely take our guidance from the controller. And, yeah, it, it, it's part of, this resolution is pretty long and because of the DOT word, lengthiness of it. But the bonding costs in the past, let's defer to Wendy, well, has been as part of that estimate.
So Wendy, do you, can you confirm that the bonding costs are, are part of the three hundred and six thousand?
I will have to get back to you on that one.
Okay, thank you. And then just one other, one other comment. I think this is exactly the kind of project that would also be really great to look at with the twenty twenty-six M O U, M O U money that would, you know, it serves Cornell very significantly as well as the rest of the community. And I think it would be a great example of, of partnering on investing in infrastructure in the city. So I'd like to, I'd like to see, you know, this and, and other kinds of projects like this considered for, for twenty twenty-six.
All right, with that, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor of the resolution has moved. And that carries unanimously. Thanks, John.
Thank you all. Great.
Second member filed item as we all know, is the city's sort of concurrent resolution for what the county did last night. This is a motion to authorize the city to enter into a sublease with Tompkins County for the purposes of operating a homeless services navigation hub. I will summarize the wherethes to say as you all know, and many of you have been actively involved in planning around the city's entering into a joint partnership with the county, the details of which are, are included here. So what we're looking to do tonight is using the funds that have been set aside in our budget. We move to resolve that the city manager, upon advice from the city attorney, is authorized to enter into a sublease at one hundred Commercial Avenue for the purposes of operating a homeless services navigation hub, terms of which are expected to include the county paying a fifty percent portion of the lease costs and a one hundred percent share of the outfit costs. And be it further resolved, the city manager shall incorporate sufficient navigation hub operational expenditures into the proposed twenty twenty-six budget. May I have a second? Second by all the person Matos. Any discussion on this? All those in favor? And proudly that carries unanimously. All right, we're almost at the homestretch, folks. So, yeah. I have a couple of appointments. You've all had the opportunity to review those. I just would like to remind the council members that they are not recognized and that we're trying to get through this meeting. And that the mayor had asked that nobody fight on his birthday, please. I have one appointment to the community police board. I am moving that Ariel Jackson be appointed to serve as a member of the community police board for a three-year term, ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven. You've all had opportunity to review this. Any questions on this appointment? Seeing none, all those in favor of the appointment? Those opposed? Okay, that carries nine to two. And I have two, I'm going to move these as a batch. Oh, all the persons, Saint Perez and Shapiro against. And okey doke. Okay, so announce the, I will not be batch moving these.
Um, one of the Yeah, Dr. House is a board member for Southside Community Center, so I will be recuse myself.
Sure. Thank you. Yep. So first I move the Dr. House be appointed to serve on the ethics board for no, no, you're just, you're not on the board. Resolve that Dr. House be appointed to serve on the ethics board for a four-year term, ending New Year's Eve, twenty twenty-eight. All those a question or a comment from all the person Keel?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I was, A, thank you for including their resumes in the communications. I just want to continue to emphasize how helpful it is. Second of all, I just wanted to say how grateful I am for Dr. House serving on the ethics board. I looked through his resume and was incredibly impressed with his qualifications to serve in this position and thank you for giving your time, Dr. House, to this board.
Thank you. I don't need one. All those in favor of the appointment? That carries ten zero. And now my next appointment will be I'm moving that Amber Robson be appointed to serve on the ethics board for a three-year term, expiring December thirty-first of twenty twenty-seven. Question, all the person Keel?
I just wanted to say the same thing about Amber. Thank you for serving. I, I read through your resume as well and was very impressed and with your qualifications and feel that you'll be a good fit for this, this board.
Thank you. All the person, all the person Letterman, you had a comment? Oh, all the person Saint Perez.
I just want to say I'm thrilled that we will finally reach our full membership.
Yeah, me too. All the person Brown. All the person, if you put your microphone on, please. Thank you. Yes.
Do y'all hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
For, this is for police board, right?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, no, yes, no, the ethics board.
I want to go back to Ariel, that she.
We vote, uh, can we talk offline? We voted on that appointment and it's already been approved.
You got my head?
It was unanimous. Yep.
Oh, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Right. Jackson was not unanimous. It was two, the members from the third ward opposed. House was unanimous, ten zero. And now Robson and okay, all those in favor of approving that appointment? That carries unanimously eleven to zero. With that, we are going to adjourn because we do have two divisive council sessions, but those are not executive sessions. We will not be so, yeah, we will, we will not be in session. So may I have a motion to adjourn, moved by all the person Hands Sharp, seconded by all the person Matos. All those in favor of adjourning? We are adjourned.